Okay. I'd like to call the Village Board to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Trustee Malcheski.
Here.
President Kardowski. Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all our men and women throughout the world. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda? If anybody has...
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the minutes from the regular Village Board meeting, August 28, 2018.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the minutes from the special Village Board meeting, September 13, 2018.
I wasn't here.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Not on the agenda items. Okay, moving on. Written communications or announcements. I have none. Does anybody have any? Okay. Number eight. Action on the consent agenda, which request to approve operator licenses, general fund financials for August 2018, year-to-date, budgeted expenditures, and department reports for September.
Move to approve?
Just a second, but I have a question.
Yep.
We doing all right? Right on target and doing nothing untoward out there? No? Okay. Good. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, we're all... Everything's good. We don't have any cost overruns. If anything, we may have excess of some sort, but we'll address that at the budget time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number nine. Public hearing. Public hearing regarding ordinance 09-1-18, rezoning parcels VA-89-2, VA-89-7, and VA-89-7-1 from B3 Community Business to P Public Use. This is a public hearing on the rezoning? For the... Yeah, the rezoning, the ordinance. It's a public hearing? Anybody want to speak for or against this item?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on. Number 10. 10A. Action regarding ordinance 09-1-18, rezoning parcels VA-89-2, VA-89-7, and VA-89-7-1 from B3 Community Business to P Public Use. This is for the Ball Diamond.
Correct. The requested rezoning is from Eschwalbodon Village staff to rezone the stadium property from B3 Community Business to P Public Use. The properties... There are three listed on there right now. They are actually in the process of undergoing a combination certified survey map to combine them all into one parcel of land, which will then permit the building of the stadium. Otherwise, without the combination certified survey map, we would have trouble building across the property lines. So this will bring the stadium into conformance with the zoning.
I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance 09-1-18.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 09-1-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10B. Action on Class A Beer/Class A Liquor License Request for Aldi Inc., DBA Aldi #54.
Madam President, I'm going to abstain from any discussion or vote on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
This is just beer and wine? Am I right?
Oh, it's...
Wine follows under the liquor.
I'm sorry?
Class A liquor. Wine follows under Class A liquor, but they're only selling beer and liquor. I mean, wine, excuse me.
But I hear again, well, once they get to Class A, they can sell anything.
Correct.
Okay.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, I'm in favor.
One question. Do Aldi Aldis have this?
I can't speak to that, but their request is no different than any other grocer in the village.
Okay.
Are they going to have a separate... Are they required to have a separate location as the other?
They'll be locked up. There are hours of operation. They close at eight.
But I mean, do they have a separate location in their store for this, like they do at the other stores?
No. In your green sheet, there's a yellowed area. That's where the beer and the wine will be located. But per ordinance, there are special needs as far as locking things up if you're still in operation after the curfew, if you will.
Okay.
But they close at eight. Thus, not an issue.
All right. Do we have limits on these licenses?
Class A liquor, self-imposed, village-wide, eight is the quota.
Then what are we at?
This will be seven.
It just, to me, we have... And I have nothing against Aldis. They're a fine organization, but I just think we've got enough. We've got enough. And...
You can't discriminate against them, though.
Well, I know you can't discriminate, but I... That doesn't mean you have to approve it either. So I just think we have enough of them in the village already. We've given everybody who's come forward, beer and wine, all the gas stations and the grocery stores, and I just think there's enough of that already. So that's why I'm voting no.
I personally see this... I mean, this is a grocery store, and our other grocery stores that we do have in the village do have a license for beer and wine. I believe Cops has the liquor.
Pick 'n Save has the whole nine yard.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Pick 'n Save, not Cops anymore, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve Class A Beer and Class A Liquor License Request for Aldi Inc., DBA Aldi #54.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the Class A Beer/Class A Liquor Request for Aldi Inc., DBA Aldi #54. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say aye. I'm voting no.
I'm voting no, too.
So we have two no's and one for ayes and one abstain.
And that passes.
Okay. 10C. Action on Class B Beer/Class C Wine License Request for Creative Edge Media LLC, DBA Edge VR Arcade. Mr. Clerk?
Consistent with an approval of a few months ago for the same like business on Vander Perren, everything's in order.
Question on... Is that place open?
This place?
This one we're talking about on Vander Perren?
You bet.
Well, this is... We're on Packerland.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Can somebody explain what that's a little bit about as far as the business?
It's a video arcade, video games, things of that nature. They have a bistro within the building, offer food, thus the Class C Wine designation, and they just wanted to offer beer and wine as part of their business model.
So it fits the profile of any other...
Yeah, the Village Board passed the same type of request a couple of months ago for the entity on Vander Perren Way.
I went by there today, and I thought, I had questions just driving by the building on what it was about, but okay, you've answered my question.
Do they have... Looking at the floor plan, I couldn't tell. Are there video rooms that are enclosed that wouldn't always have sightlines? If there was always... If there was just miners in there, wouldn't have sightlines to the servers or whoever's serving?
Well, they're not here to speak on their behalf unless these folks are from...
Because I think that was one question that the people up on Vander Perren answered from us, if I remember right.
I just pulled up their website, so I'm not... And I have not been in there, so I'm not the expert, but it appears what's on their website is open, like a three-sided cubes of settings where it's more open. It's not separated such that it's not a private room. At least, that's what it appears from online.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, do you... On here, do we release these licenses? I mean, do we issue licenses before the training is intact, or...
No. I hold them until...
But we have...
Like, let's say the previous item, until I have the responsible beverage server training certificate, I hold on to the license. They don't get it.
But we issued them without having that training in place?
No. You have to have it, or you don't get it.
We've issued the license now, for instance.
You're granting it, but I don't issue it until I have every document necessary.
But we have granted that license without having the training in place?
The board has... From what I understand, the board has approved it, but it's not physically given to the person until the training is in place.
Correct.
So they can't utilize it until the training is in place.
Right.
But they don't get it.
It's like an example. ABC comes before you for a Class B combination. Well, if you turn it down, they're not going to go through those other steps. So it depends on when they want to open. A lot of people come before the village. They already have it in hand, but they can be granted, but they're not issued it until I'm satisfied with all the proper documentation.
So what you're saying, Pat, this is a chain of command in creating a business?
Chain of...
To opening a business?
Well, yeah, it's certainly a large part to that, right?
Well, not to be real legalistic, but should we attach something when we grant these? I think Mark raises a good issue. Should we grant these, saying subject to?
Well, that could be part of your motion.
I mean, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. I'm just... I'm asking the question, should we?
We've done that before, Ken.
I'm sorry?
We've done that. We've, you know, granted the license with, you know...
Subject to the conditions?
Subject to the conditions of them passing their...
Correct.
So just make it in your motion and...
They have to do all of that stuff by ordinance anyway.
Right.
The clerk has to follow the ordinance, and you are one step among many, so it's already required.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we issue Class B Beer/Class C Wine License for Creative Edge Media LLC, DBA Edge VR Arcade with other stipulations that are in place.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class B Beer/Class C Wine License Request for Creative Edge Media LLC, DBA Edge VR Arcade. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
One no. D. Action on Class A Liquor License Request, The Shinery Nina LLV, DBA The Shinery.
Madam President, I'm going to abstain from any discussion or vote on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Before you is a request from The Shinery. They operate out of the Fox River Mall and I believe another location. Are you the Reissmans?
Yes.
They're the proprietors, and if you have any questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to step forward and state their name and address for the record in answering any questions you may have in regard to the request.
I'd like to open the floor so that the people could speak.
Yeah. They don't have... They're part of the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to come to the table and state your name and address, please?
Thank you.
Elizabeth Reisman, 5091 Pumpkin Court, Larson, Wisconsin.
You have to pull that microphone right close to you. Thank you.
Elizabeth Reisman, 5091 Pumpkin Court, Larson, Wisconsin.
And Troy Reisman, same address, 5091 Pumpkin Court.
Thank you. Okay. My question on this was... Okay, it's in the mall. It's where the picture place was, correct?
Correct.
Do you plan on... Because a class... Class A liquor would allow you to sell any liquor.
Correct.
Do you plan on selling any liquor other than...
Ninety-eight percent of our business is moonshine. We do have a few wines that we offer. We do not offer beer.
Yeah, and we're not a bar.
Yeah, we don't serve drinks.
Right.
So, you know, just selling it.
This would be our third, actually, our fourth location. We did have one in DePere, but we shut that one down. It just was on Main Street, and it didn't do too well. We're more of a gift store than we are anything else. We have more pickles and candles and salsas, different things like that that are made with moonshine, or similar to the Gatlinburg experience. I guess if you've ever been to Gatlinburg, Tennessee, that's actually what we're doing. I would say fifteen percent of the moonshines are actually ours. The rest of them are just brought in through distributors. There is some small sampling involved by Wisconsin State statute. Each adult per day can have up to three-quarters of an ounce, which is two little small church communion cups, and everybody's licensed. We've, you know, we've got one, like I say, in the Fox River Mall right now and also in Cedarburg, Wisconsin.
Well, I tell you what. I'm on the Public Works Committee, and I voted no, and I'm going to vote no. And nothing has nothing to do with you personally. I didn't know you folks until you stepped up here, but it's just gotten to be too much. And as was stated a moment ago, once the license is issued, you're free to sell any kind of liquor there, and we can't limit it. And I just don't see that as being appropriate in the mall. I don't see that at all being appropriate there. So I'm going to vote no on this issue.
Okay.
I think we have enough places. Lord, we're just being inundated with places that sell alcohol. And it's not your fault. I'm not blaming you, but I just think we've got... Somehow, we've got to limit this, and I'm going to vote no.
So you don't brew on-site?
No, we don't. We have a small family called the Hendricks Family Distilling Company out of Amro, Wisconsin. Right now, they make about five different moonshines for us. To be honest, and I appreciate your thoughts on this, we were voted the number-one place to Christmas shop for two years in a row in Wisconsin, also the number-one new gift store in Wisconsin. We... Our business model is to never sell whiskeys or brandies or anything else. The only reason that we do have our own version of wine is because it's locally-made fruit wine, and it's kind of a Cedarburg, Wisconsin thing. That Cedarburg is more of a wine community. Honestly, you know, it's a pretty good wholesome place. It's not... The mall actually asked us to be there, as did the Fox River Mall.
They did approach us. They're... I think they're looking for more of an adult experience in the mall, and that's kind of what we offer. You know, it's really an experience. It's more about, you know, we play some country music, and, you know, it's fun, and it's not... Yes, we sell alcohol, but a good portion of our sales are from our pickles and our asparagus and our mustards and that kind of thing.
All locally made, too, by the way. Our pickles, our salsa are all made right here in Green Bay, so...
And then in Appleton as well.
Well, if you were going to sell wine, that might... Might. I'm not making any promises, but if you were going to sell wine, I probably wouldn't have a problem with that. But again, once that Class A license is issued, you can sell... And let's say you sell your business next week to someone, and they open up a full liquor store. We can't... They got the license. You sell the license to them? Is that... No, they can't do that without...
They have to reapply.
Have to come through here again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But I still have the same objection, so...
Chief, I would like to hear from you. My only concern is the sampling.
The what?
The sampling. Do you have any issues with this being in the mall?
What the gentleman just described is what the state regulates for sampling, which other liquor stores or grocery stores that provide the same product do the samplings. You'll see the sandwich boards out in front of the stores saying sampling XYZ product.
No, no, you're...
And as the gentleman said, you're... You go to church, little communion cups, so you can't get out of hand with that. And I'm guessing with... Probably inside the business, there's going to be video and so forth, and with the high traffic volume and whatnot, the propensity of something like that happening. The one thing with this business model, it's within a store rather than a kiosk where you've got people coming and going.
Right.
They have controlled entrance coming out from the food court.
So what would happen? So say some... You're right by the food court. So if somebody comes into your store, buys a bottle of moonshine, and then goes across the way at whatever the restaurant is over there, grabs a sandwich, sits in the middle of the food court, and opens up the moonshine and decides to start drinking it?
That actually came up when we had the first Fox River Mall store, and we're... You know, we try to let people know that this is for outside consumption regardless because of our license. That's for outside consumption. We also have mall security that's always on alert for anything like that. A year and a half now in the mall, well, close to a year, I guess, and we haven't had an issue like that.
We've thought about it, but, you know, how we would handle that, but it's not... Nobody's done it, to our knowledge.
And this is a slightly smaller mall than the Fox River Mall. I should also point out that everybody that works for us, and most of it's our family, my son, my daughter, and some of the other people that we will now employ, they will have the proper liquor license, proper...
Service certificates.
Server's license, gone through all the classes and everything. We insist on that before they even walk in as an employee.
You know, I guess my question is, what's the difference if you walk in the food court and you brought your own bottle of booze or whatever in there?
I guess that's where security comes in, too.
You know, that's what you got security for. And I understand what all you people are saying, but it just so happens I happened to be in Gatlinburg once, and I've been in the moonshine place once. They do not, from what I've seen at that place... It's a novelty store where moonshine is number one. There's no doubt about it. Sampling is done in very small amounts. If I want to sample brandy, whiskey, vodka, gin, I can go to Door County and do that at any distillery I want to, because they all make it up there. They give out samples, and I haven't seen any problem with it. It's not a place to go and drink, and I'm certain that they're not going to give somebody six, eight samples, knowing what could happen with that, so... And again, I'm going back to the novelty thing. They do sell a lot of different things, the sampling around the moonshine thing. It's a novelty store. It's kind of a... Can I say western theme?
Correct.
Or cowboy theme, or however you want to pronounce it. And what I've experienced about it, it was a great experience to go there. I did not have any sampling because I've had enough samples when I was in service. I know what it can do for you and to you. But anyway, that's besides the point. They are going to run a liquor store, and I'm sure they're going to take care of it the way that we do, where we want people in our community. You know, I'm not going to pick on Chris, but I can stop at Chris's store and have a sample of wine or whatever that they have. So I don't think the sampling is an issue. So I think it's something new to this area. You know, change is tough to take, but sometimes we've got to do that and see how it works out. If it ain't going to work, hey, we got the right to shut them down, too. What's the percentage of alcohol?
It varies. The strongest you can possibly go is 125, and we do have one bottle that has that. Honestly, the majority of the moonshines are forty-proof. They're root beer and butterscotch and different creams and things like that. So the moonshine that we're selling, you're not going to go blind drinking. That's for sure.
As low as thirty-five proof for us, and...
Our apple cobbler is thirty-five proof, made in Amro.
You know, I'm sitting on this board. We've seen a lot of different things, but I think what divides this board and makes it the hardest decisions for us is anything related to alcohol. I've had... We've had more split decisions and split votes about alcohol and chickens, I should say, says my next one.
Chickens, too.
But compared to a lot of other big, major issues that we're spending millions and millions of dollars on, and, I mean, I wish we had a simple answer, just that you stand by for, you know, that was mandated by the state or we had limits on different things that are out there. And as I look at this, I'm not in favor of just letting all applications go through that on selling alcohol, but this is a gift shop. I mean, I don't know... There's other gift shops in the village that... Places that sell alcohol, so it's like it's hard to vote against it, I guess. And that's the thing about it, and you've got precedents that's being set on all these other businesses, and if you don't approve it, you're... I don't see how you can do it, not both for one, both for one and not the other.
Well, this will... This will bring our quota to eight, correct, Pat?
Correct.
Yeah. So we'll be at quota.
That's a self-imposed quota.
Right. Self-impose, but it still is a quota.
Is there any other...
Actually, if I may go further, in consultation with the village attorney today, going to bring to Public Works to remove that quota, get the feeling of the committee and full board. It's just a number, like we talked about last summer. You can increase it to 12. You can get rid of it altogether. There's no state-imposed quota number.
Right.
So for what it's worth.
So I'm on Public Works as well, and I've voted for this, for granting the license. And I don't know, maybe because I'm the younger mind on the board, I do think this is something that would be really beneficial to our mall. You see big box stores dying all the time, and a small store that we can bring in and bring something unique to our area with all of the stuff that we're doing, this is something that I think will add value and add value to our mall and our area and what we're bringing. Additionally, I mean, I just got back from vacation at Vail, Colorado, and there's distilleries and tastings everywhere, everywhere. And that was, I don't want to say one of the best parts of the trip, but, you know, just going and I saw moonshine pickles, and it's the first time I've ever seen it in my life. I did not taste them, but, you know, just certain things that I think it brings a different value to our area. And I don't know. I, like I said, maybe it's just because I'm the younger mind on the board, but I think it's something that will add value to our mall and continue to bring people into the mall. That's what we need. We need to bring people into our mall to keep our mall going.
I appreciate you saying that, too, and if you ever look at our stores, they're divided so that one half of the store is all the different moonshines, the other half of the store is what we call the moonshine mercantile, which is all the gifts and things like that. We do bring a lot because we have established quite a name over the last four years, which was actually a surprise to my wife and I. We also own Valley Organics, a lawn care company, so that's our busy time of the year right now. So, that's our busy time of the year right now. We weren't sure this was going to work, but it did. We also bring in a lot of TV celebrities from the TV show Moonshiners from Discovery Channel and Michael Ballard's Full Throttle Saloon. They actually make moonshine for us now. So, with that, there's, there's a lot of added people coming into the community, we hope.
Another draw.
Yeah.
I'll call the question, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Motion.
No motion yet?
No motion.
Okay, sorry.
No motion.
Move to approve action on Class A liquor license request to the Shinerie Nina LLVDBA The Shinerie.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Class A liquor license for The Shinerie Nina LLVDBA The Shinerie. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed.
No.
Roll call, please.
I think it's six to one, isn't it?
Just one abstention and one no.
One, no, I would, I would do a no.
Oh, well, let's go rule.
Sure, go ahead.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes. Aye.
Trustee Paul.
Aye.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Bukowski.
No.
Trustee Melchewski.
Yes, aye.
That was a firm maybe.
A weak, a very weak firm.
President Kardowski.
No, the only reason why I'm voting no is because of it being in the mall. That, that is the only reason why.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll contact you folks.
Okay, 10E, possible discussion and action on amending ordinance 9-2-18, keeping a poultry regulated.
All right, this, this item is a proposed amendment to our chicken ordinance. Essentially, what it would change or modify is that the signatures that a permit applicant would need to obtain, they would only need to obtain them at the point of initial application instead of every year on an, obviously, annual basis. And... So, with that, in the event that there were to be new neighbors that would move in during the course of the year, they could then have some input to the village at the time of renewal for the application. So, that's what the proposed ordinance amendment is for.
Move to approve ordinance number 9-2-18.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 9-2-18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. F, possible discussion and action on ordinance 9-3-18, amending section 6-2-151 and section 6-2-156 relating to soliciting and managed market regulations.
The proposed ordinance change with respect to this item is to prohibit solicitors and managed market permit holders from engaging in that specific behavior on Packer game days essentially, which is consistent with what the village's past practice has been with, with respect to the application process. Solicitors and managed market applicants would have seen on any application that there was specific language that indicated that this type of behavior was prohibited on Packer game day. So, really what the ordinance is, is reflecting what has been the practice and stated on our applications. This would not apply to direct sellers, which are those permit holders who have a specific location on game days. Really, it's for ease of enforcement, and we really would like to see people get their own direct seller's permit. So, that's what the proposed ordinance change here is intended to do.
All right, just to make it clear, the people that are selling, let's say, Packer goods with their assigned stalls that do have permits within the village, the seller permits, they are legal to sell as in the past.
Correct. It's direct seller.
Okay, as long as everybody understands that, because I've had conversations with people, and I've only said that so that the people that are doing it now, they're in code with our village ordinances.
Will this have any impact on the new baseball stadium?
This is just for Packer teams.
Yeah, it's only for, it's only for Packer and Lambeau Field events.
Okay.
Move to approve ordinance number 9-3-18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 9-3-18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. G, action on an amendment to the Gordmans site planned unit development for a proposed fortified bank located on parcel VA-116-8-1.
The, this proposal for a fortified bank to be located on the vacant parcel just to the north of the Gordmans site on Cormier Road. This is actually a PUD that was approved many years ago. As kind of a quirk of the PUD that's approved at the time, even a new site plan does need to come through Site Plan Review Committee, Plan Commission, and Village Board. So, the proposed fortified bank will be located on that site, and you have the site plan in front of you. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I've got it, something like, because I'm not familiar with all the, all the terms as far as the retention ponds, things like that, but what is a dry retention pond?
A dry retention pond, and I'll defer to Director Martin if I mess this up at all, but a dry retention pond is meant basically to attenuate flood or high rain events where it slowly then releases the water out over time, but then is dry for most of the time.
Well, that's much shorter than Doug would have given us.
And it siphons out.
Yes. Where's this going exactly? I mean, it's, there's map, I'm just...
Just north of Gordmans.
Immediately north of Gordmans. So, it'd be to the east of, is it Capital Wealth Management? Yep.
Well, it's, there is an empty lot between the bank and Gordmans.
Yes.
It fronts Cormier, then an empty lot, and then Gordmans. There is a... I forgot how many thousand square foot, Aaron, how many thousand square foot store can they build there? There was a number, I remember talking to Otravick about it.
It was a smaller...
Six thousand?
Yeah, it was a smaller box store.
Yeah, it was something of that nature. So, it, like Aaron said, it's gone through site plan. It's a beautiful building. The architect of it is quite unique for that particular area, which it definitely needs sprucing up down Cormier. With the new road that's coming next year, we'll get rid of the bumps and, and whatever else is in that road.
I'm move to approve the amendment to the Gordmans site plan unit development for a proposed fortified bank located on parcel VA-116-8-1 as described in item 10G.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the Gordmans site planned unit development. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10H, request to proceed with preliminary site work for parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1. Allison.
Previously approved the acquisition of the Schneider site on the Fox River. It's two different parcels that you have listed there in order to prepare and get us, we'll be bringing forward bonding in October, so we'll anticipate a closing in early November. So, meanwhile, we'd like to get started with designs, layout, engineering so that we could do demolition probably early spring, late winter, and then get going with roadwork and utilities. So, in order to move all of that along, we need to do a wetland delineation. We need to locate the private utilities on the site, do a survey work in terms of the topography of the land and the actual site itself. Soil borings, because it's so close to the river, we need to know just the quality of the soils in terms of footings, foundations, and whatnot. There'll be an asbestos inspection. We do think that that number may potentially come down, as Schneider's indicated, they have done some of that asbestos remediation work, but we still need to go back through that. And then also, the preliminary layout, we've already worked with an architect who's given us a general site layout, but now we need to kind of do the practical application in terms of stormwater and how everything fits in and actual twists and turns of the road that ultimately we will bring back for you to see. And we are still working with two different developers in terms of the actual site development as well, and they've been part of our discussions as we've been ongoing. We're just trying to figure out what site costs actually cost, what can we do in, in order to keep moving along on that.
What, what, okay, as far as design and everything, do we, do we have a development that is going to happen there yet?
We do, in terms of the two developers, one would be residential in nature. I'm just trying to not share too much, I'm sorry. Would still be residential in nature, and one is a developer we've previously talked with you guys about. That is moving along. We are also looking at a senior, senior product as well that would be higher density. We're just trying to work through those numbers, and that one's a little bit more complicated just from a numbers standpoint and trying to get that part to work. All of the parties have been in the room together to try and, and so, and schmush it all together and make it work, and it seems to be working so far from a conceptual standpoint. It's really about trying to get to the numbers so that they can figure out what it costs to build. The more traditional residential component, that is still pretty easy to do, relatively speaking, and that part is good. It's just a matter of, we may need to provide TIF assistance on the senior product if that's what you would want on that site. If that doesn't work, we can convert that into a more traditional residential type project. So, we're, we can be flexible on that if that's not something you can do. But until we get site costs and really the geotechnical soils information, that's where we're kind of stuck a little bit on the senior housing component of the project.
So, this monetary impact that we got in here, does that go towards any?
All of it would be in TIF, and it's still our goal that all of those costs could be recouped through the residential development portion of it, in terms of how it goes. We don't have an exact number yet because we're still trying to figure out how many units we end up fitting on the site in terms of where does the road layout and being able to divide up, subdivide up the lots. But we still think that we can pull that together.
But what I guess I'm asking is this, if any portion of this project or is the $100,000 part of the TIF assistance that is given?
No, we're not giving any TIF at this point. We would just, we're using it in TIF. We're not using general fund dollars. We would budget it through TIF, but we think when we ultimately come to a financial agreement, particularly on the residential side, all of our expenditures, including this, would be recouped, if you will. We had talked about, in terms of what we would sell individual lots for, they would take into consideration recouping these funds. The idea, long-term, on a typical, traditional, I'd say, it's not really fully traditional residential, but let's just say residential product, is that we would be able to recoup our expenses for land and infrastructure by selling off lots or units within there.
If the developer asked for $200,000 worth of assistance in TIF, what I'm saying is, is $100,000 part of that, that they only get $100,000? I understand it'll be taken care of in TIF dollars. I don't have any problem with that.
It's not TIF dollars. I am saying that in order for someone, let's just pretend it's a house, a single-family dwelling anywhere, in order for them to build on that lot, they're going to pay us cash for that lot. And our goal in this, what we've set out to do, is that we would take all of our expenses and divide it by the number of lots on that site, and they would pay us back. So, we literally get cash back for that. It hasn't, we have not touched any TIF increment.
No, that's kind of common.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. That, Allison, that's kind of...
It still ultimately has to come back to you, but what I'm saying is, we are building these expenses. We're, we have some front outlaying of expenses to do, but ultimately, an agreement will come to you that our, our internal goal, if you will, is not to use TIF to recover the dollars, but rather make a sale transaction to break even, if you will. And have additional TIF increment that we can do all sorts of other awesome things with.
Just to simplify this, the expenses being incurred now will be divided up onto the number of lots that'll be sold, and we'll get that in return.
And that's our goal, correct.
All right. Did I heard the word senior apartments?
You heard a senior product, but that would probably be an accurate word. If we can make it work, that one is being a little bit of a struggle financially.
Struggle harder.
I will struggle.
You'd qualify. Don't worry about it.
Hundred percent agree.
In this village, we're losing senior people because we don't have it.
And there will be products in there that will be senior-friendly, 100%, even if it's not apartments, but we are working on a senior apartment product in that project. But that will have to come back to you later.
Okay, all right, all right.
And we're still working, they're all, we're all working together. It's very positive. It's, the feedback is good. Everybody's very collaborative. That's just a tough, you know, road to hoe in terms of trying to make it work. But we are doing whatever we can, and we are hoping by getting the geotechnical information that helps make those numbers better.
Okay, this monetary impact, now, this is money that's going to be spent before we own the property?
Correct, yes, yes. But we really need to kind of churn out things pretty quickly in order to be able to get in the ground and start, you know, it'll take us probably three months just to do roadwork when we actually finally get in there, three, four months? We're on a tight time schedule to get rock and roll.
I, I don't have a problem where you're going on this. I guess the only question I'm going to bring up, we've got a lot of things happening in this village that's taking our village employees to their extreme extent of getting things done. Now, we're taking another project down. How is that going to affect our staff?
We are, we are stressed, and they're not allowed to say that they're not, or that they are. I don't, I don't know what you want me to say. We can't do nothing.
We just want to thank you for approving the Shinerie before...
I think you'll be more kind January 1st.
I hear you.
Yeah, it's stressful, it's a crazy place, but you also have an economy that's doing great, and we have to capture that market, and you want senior products, and I know we have, the Expo Center is taking off at this point.
This has been going on a long time for that parcel of property. We need to move on it. And if it takes 20 hours a day, it takes 20 hours a day. There's no extra pay involved, but just to take, it's going to take some, it's going to take some time and effort.
Doug's not smiling right now.
We are discussing staffing, but we haven't really solved it. I mean, everybody's, everybody's pulling in the same direction. Nobody's killing each other. Nobody's even said any bad words to each other yet.
I'm going to move to, I'm going to make a motion, and we can talk some more. I'm going to make a motion to, to provide the authority to staff to contract with McMahon and Associates and Stan Tech for the work described in agenda item 10H.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request to proceed with preliminary site work for parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1.
I've got a question.
Yep.
Just that, when you're making, and I understand everything that's what you're trying to accomplish here, but you said your goal is to, you've said it a couple of times, a goal is to recoup that money. What, what would stop you from reaching that goal?
I don't know. The soils are all mushy, and we need fill on the site, and there's more contamination problems than we know of, and, I don't know, costs are something. You know, one of the issues with it being on the water, like my experience in Green Bay when we did the waterfront projects, everything you see down along Washington, those are all done on pilings that are driven into the ground. You have tons of steel driven into the ground to support those buildings. We don't know what that's like. We don't think that for the, a typical, more traditional residential type product that you would need it, but on that senior product, if that becomes, you know, a four or five-story building, it potentially would, and that adds to the cost to that. We're trying to provide a diverse mix of products on the site, so what some of the larger buildings might need for foundations could play into that. You know, it's just that we just don't know. We think it's doable, but we just, we don't know what we don't know yet.
Allison, Manso Flats, they built right on the riverfront. Did they have the drive pilings?
They did not.
I don't, I don't remember that.
I don't think they did.
They might be back far enough.
I don't remember. So...
It all depends on what the soils are, are there, you know?
Yeah, okay.
And there's a lot of fill in Green Bay up against the, what do you call that thing, Tony?
The wall?
What, metal wall, whatever, the break wall, whatever you call the wall. So, there's a lot of fill behind that, so that makes a big difference. There is one, like a little creek that kind of used to, a slough that runs, ran through the Schneider site that was filled at some point. So, you have a potential schmush, another technical term, there. But it's hard to say exactly where that is, how that's going to affect it. Right now, we're still blissfully optimistic.
Let's move forward.
Don't look at Doug.
Okay. Any more questions on it?
I don't have a second.
Yeah, we had a second.
Yeah, there is, Mike.
Mike.
Trustee Melchewski, thank you.
If there's bad soils, we'll dig it out and build a big marina.
We'll buy you, we'll buy you a shovel.
I've, I've just been on Wayzata Boulevard and the city's on Lake Minnetonka. Nothing is impossible.
We, we have a motion and a second to proceed with the request for the Schneider site parcels, site work parcels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Yeah.
Okay. Aye. Ashwabanon Ballpark Playing Field and Field Lighting Construction Contract Bid Awards. Mr. Martin.
Ken, for the next three and a half hours, I'd like to go through specifications for the playing field on this project.
You got a minute and a half.
If you remember last month, folks, we awarded four of the contracts for the Ashwabanon Ballpark project, general construction, plumbing, HVAC and electrical. We had two contracts left to bid out and award. One of them was the playing field lighting and one was the playing field, field itself. We had taken bids on the playing field originally. We rebid it because we want to get some additional information and specifications to make sure that the potential contractors had all the information they could in bidding it. We had roughly about a $1.34 million budget on those two bids. The two lowest qualified bidders came in at just, just over 1.24 million. So these bids came in pretty well. We had four bids on the playing field, three on the field lighting. The lowest responsible bidder for the playing field was SCG Fields in the amount of $798,139.09 and the field lighting lowest responsible bidder was Techline Sports, Sports Lighting in the amount of $447,000, $444,647. In reviewing the specs and bids with our construction manager and the project architect, everything is, is in order and we'd recommend it for approval.
The only question I have for you people that are taking care of this, are you comfortable in these contractors? That's the only question I got.
I think our biggest challenge so far has been the timeframe of this project and you're seeing that in, in some of the cost that we've dealt with over here over the past couple of months. And the, the contractors that we have on board so far, we've had three construction meetings. Everybody's been, has been very good. We've had each contractor come forward with some potential cost savings measures and the general's been very upfront with us. He said in order to get this project done for the first pitch next year, he, he needs to have these meetings each week and he needs all of the subs to be reporting into him and he's been meeting out there every couple of days going through things. So that's been a positive development. The general contractor is the same one we had on the community center project. They've been doing a very good job so far and, and the other three contractors that are on board have been doing the same. So the, the contract portion of it, now that we're into construction, once you have the team in place, that's when you kind of see what you have and we're, we're getting positive feedback right now, which is, which is good to see. If we have a winter like we had last winter, I'll probably have grayer hair at this point next year. If we can have a decent winter where we don't have snow starting in November and lasting through April, that would be a benefit, but the plan is I'll go off base here just a little bit. If you, when you drove in tonight, you probably saw the site is just about clear of all the trees. The first work you're going to see happening, there's crews inside the CTI building doing demolition work right now on the inside, but the first major project they're going to be doing is there's that large brown storage building just behind the CTI building. That is being moved and that'll be along left field wall, which puts it along homegrown way just south of our driveway entrance. That's where some of the concessions and bathrooms are going to be. That is the first thing that's going to be moved. That'll be moved over into that general location while they get that foundation set for it. And then you'll see probably in the next week, week and a half, you'll see the, the top soil stripped from the site because they're going to start bringing in fill from our pond project that's currently being excavated, same contractor doing that work. And they'll start building the soils up where the concourse and seating bowl will be located. So that's the first things you're going to see this, this fall. They want to get some of the foundations poured yet this fall so that they can then put in tents over the winter and they're going to do a lot of their concrete pours during the winter. They have it figured into their bid to do so, so that the seating bowl is ready to go for next spring to start installing the seats. And then the biggest thing next spring will be to have a, have a, as early of a spring as possible so the field, field contractor can get in there and get the final work done on, on the field because it's a, it's an artificial field.
Are we going to add any parking, I guess we could say in the village land to help them with the parking problem?
Not at this time. They'll be able to utilize village parking, but we've also provided them surrounding properties to potentially go and reach out to them in terms of being able to utilize their parking lots for parking. There'll be a very small, few handicap stalls, four, four, thank you, four, and there'll be a little drop-off lane that will come around so that people will be able to drop off people so they don't have to walk quite as far if they did or help with handicap access and that type of thing.
So how much green space are we going to have between our property, meeting village property and the ballpark? Is there going to be some?
Similar to what you see out there now. Similar to what you see out there now, the, the berm that you see out there now is almost the starting point of the berm that goes up and then crests into the left field wall. People will be able to sit along that berm and watch the game from there.
So that berm will become a part of the Baldimis property?
Uh, no, I think Baldimis property might cut it in the middle or just on the.
I think it's more like top of slope. The top of the berm is, is the property line.
Oh, okay, okay.
That will be the top of the, the highest part of the berm as well.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But remember, it's all village property.
Now that it's cleared out, you're kind of asking questions on where everything is.
Yeah, it looks, it looks very different. Yeah. Taking away the scrub brush and trees, all of a sudden opens it up a lot more than what you realize.
Okay, thank you.
See, your question could have been answered yes or no, but you see what you get us into? Your first question?
Ken, I understand you're in a hurry.
No, I'm not in a hurry.
I'll make a motion to award the playing field contract to SCG Fields in the amount of $798,139.09 and the field lighting contract to Techline Sports Lighting in the amount of $444,647.
Second, oh, go ahead, Allison, you second it? Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award those bids as described in 10A. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Posed. Motion carried. 10J, action on Lexus Nexus account, a current crime center interface CAD agreement. Wow, say that fast three times.
Sometimes. Good evening. I promise I'll do a better job trying to describe what the, what a CAD is as compared to last, last week's meeting.
Take your time.
Well, it's a very small game, so. What I'm requesting tonight is Lexus Nexus is, is a software that I like, that we like to purchase for our officers and all the timing of this came about is that the Brown County Communication Center works out what they call CAD, computer aided dispatch. When a caller calls into the dispatch center, there's a call taker there and they're entering all the information into the CAD, name, date, what the type of occurrences and all that. The life expectancy of the CAD has come due this year. As I'm talking right now, they're implementing the new CAD system. As they're going through and doing the updating with the new CAD system, they're doing interfaces and the Brown County IT Department approached, approached public safety both for Lexus Nexus and also for the Image Trend product, which is the next item agenda, because other agencies are already signed into Lexus Nexus. They would do the interface with us included with no cost for the interface. What, where the cost is for the yearly subscription, which would, that, that would not come online until next year in 2019, which would be in our software maintenance budget. And what Lexus Nexus would allow us to do is it's a search engine of mining of information. So a police officer or investigator can go into the computer system and go into the, go into the different records management systems. We belong to GURP, which is the Green Bay Record Management System and the rest of Brown County is part of Propheneax and go and search those fields for suspects, cars, animals, you name it. And then Lexus Nexus is also part of 800 other agencies throughout the country where we would have access to their record files, much like they would have ours. As you know, with our criminals, they're not just staying within the borders. They're here, they go to Milwaukee, they go to Chicago and so we're able to, be able to track them and we'll get more information. And also with Lexus Nexus, they also goes in the public files, would be the commonly known as the Yellow Pages or White Pages, any kind of public records, it'll be searching for that. And another feature which we are currently have, but we, we transitioned to Lexus Nexus is the crime mapping, what we currently have on our village website. So residents and businesses can look at the crimes or incidents that are taking place in the area through the crime mapping feature through Lexus Nexus. So with, with that said, public safety is looking permission to sign in with Lexus Nexus to go, to move forward with the interface to become part of this network and then like, like I said, then we would build this into the 2019 budget under our software maintenance.
Do they, do they follow misdemeanants and felonies or just felonies or?
Anything, anything that's on a, on a record, so.
I'm sorry?
Anything on a, on a record, I mean, they'll.
It's got to be a criminal record.
Does, well, it, just incidents as well. I mean.
If I get a speeding ticket in Atlanta, Georgia, that's not going to show up?
That's not going to show up. That's a traffic offense.
Okay.
But we're talking about property crimes and, you know, actual reports that are being written and whatnot and then also just the notes that are being put in the calls. There's, there's, there's probably a, probably about, about 25% of all calls and actual police report's done on, but there's notes that are put into the CAD, which is the, the call taker portion of it and it might be a partial license plate or, or what have you. And by this search, search engine, we'll be able to go in there and grab that, that information.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Make a motion to approve the agreement for Lexus Nexus, current crime center interface CAD.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for Lexus Nexus, a current crime center interface CAD for.
Quick question before you vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, I wanted to, did you want that amount in there, in that motion also?
Yes, please.
Is that, is that okay for the first and second?
Yes, absolutely.
For $4,926.77. Okay, now your question.
Is that, is that, that, so that price will cover us for the year 2019?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And other communities are chipping in for the $41,000?
That is correct. That is, that is our, that is based on the number of officers that we threw with your department.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Obviously, Green Bay and Brown County are paying a higher amount just compared to us.
Okay. Are other communities, DePur getting into this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand that? Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, K, action on image trend interface CAD agreement.
All right. Once again, as I explained before the, how the CAD, how the CAD works for Brown County, the interface with this, once again, Brown County IT is willing to do the, pay for the interface cost for us to use the image, image trend product. City DePur and the Green Bay Metro Fire Department currently uses product as well. What this allows the public safety officers to do is that once, once when they're done with the patient care and it's time to do the, the report, it could be fire or EMS reports, there's several fields that need to be filled out, name, address, time of, time of dispatch, time of call, the time you left the hospital or left the scene to the hospital and back. All those data points would be automatically downloaded into the fire EMS field. This will eliminate human error with the number of keystrokes that a, that a public safety has, has to do to enter the call volume, especially when we deal with fire calls when we have multiple fire units on scene. It's, it's tracking when they leave the station, when they arrive on scene and the different movements that happen. And then on the EMS side, this is all, the image trend also goes into our LifeQuest and LifeQuest is our third-party billing company, which they take this information of name of patient, where they live and whatnot, and that's part of the billing feature for LifeQuest. So it's kind of the right hand's helping the left hand through this.
We had a very good discussion at Finance and Personnel last week on both these last few items, so we became very well versed in them, so. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for image trend interface CAD agreement with county for $3,500 a year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the image trend interface CAD agreement for $3,500 to be in the 2019 budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, A, possible discussion and action on issuing request for proposals for consultant for public safety study. Tony.
Okay, so this agenda item is somewhat informational and preliminary with respect to a request for approval. Essentially, what we have is, is coming up with future budgets with respect to public safety and collective bargaining negotiations that will begin sometime next year because of the expiration of the collective bargaining agreement at the end of 2019. What we're looking at is really trying to figure out a way to find efficiencies and take an evaluation of the operations of public safety to assist us in, in those future budget and collective bargaining agreement negotiations. So what has been discussed at a staff level is putting together a request for proposals to go out and try to find a consultant or receive proposals from a consultant to assist in a study, to take a look at those industry trends and, and data evaluation to assist in, in those items going forward. So really at this point, we haven't drafted an RFP. It's, we're just bringing this forward to ask for your approval to put together an RFP in which we would then issue the RFP. Proposals would come in and at that point, we would look at, evaluate the proposals and would bring forward any contract expenditure funds to you at a future point if we were able to find some sort of consultant that's responsive and, and certainly cost-effective as well. So at this point, like I said, it's, it's a preliminary request for approval to, to go out for an RFP for consultant for those purposes.
Yeah, it says here, potential cost of the study is unknown. Where could this cost go?
We can pick and choose that when we're at Finance and Personnel, if the, if the proposal comes back for whatever amount, we can take and separate that out and choose whichever section we want to.
So there'll be costs that we can look at.
Right.
Prior to, okay, all right, I don't have a problem with that.
This, when we, when we discussed this internally about sending out this RFP, it was more of a, you know, public safety, we've been with us since, what, 1980? We became a public safety, I believe? You know, and we've always, you know, done, it's always been done the same way. We don't know if the trend is, you know, do we need more paramedics? Do we need more ambulance drivers? Do we need more police? And maybe we'll find those answers out with a consultant, so.
Well, this is only a request to issue an RFP, so I don't see any problem. I'll move to approve the request to have an RFP developed for, for a consultant for public safety study and with the results to be brought back to the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the request for proposal, issuing request for proposal for consultant for public safety study. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. 10M, action on partnership status as an employer with paper converting machine PCM credit union.
This is just, just, just something that, that gives our employees a, another option for where to invest their funds. Unlike, help me here.
Capital.
Capital, thank you. I always want to say Cardinal for some reason. Unlike Capital, paper converting credit union is one that has, it, it only involves certain employers and they already do with the school district. The school district employees are allowed to do there and they have a whole host of employers that are able to use their facilities, so I just, they've been, they've been good to the village, as has Capital, but I thought this, this would be an opportunity for our employees to, to use another credit union if they so wish.
Ken, can anybody walk into Capital or? Ken, can anybody walk into Capital, or, yeah, Paper Converting and join that union?
No.
You can't.
It's, it's only for employers that are, that are approved. I was surprised to learn that several years ago when they, when we were seeking funds for the three facilities. No, they have to be approved employer. If you're an employee for an approved employer, then yes, but if you just walk in, no, you cannot open an account.
Okay, because at one time, all credit unions were that way, you had to be approved.
Yeah, they used to be, yeah.
It used to be, but I know Capital Credit Union, you walk in there and join that any time now.
Right, yes.
But this is the opposite of that, okay.
Was this...
Well, it's another avenue.
Was this request based on employees asking for this or something that...
No, it was just something that I brought forward.
What is the village gonna have to do with this? Are we gonna...
Nothing, we just, no, nothing. We don't have anything to do with it. All we have to do is...
We'll, we'll just be a person that can go in there then.
Right, if the board approves this, then any employee of the village will be able to use the credit union.
It's no staff time, no nothing.
We don't have any other involvement.
No, no.
No, there's no funds involved.
Yeah, another avenue is always good.
Both credit unions, Capital and, and Paper Converting have been very good to this community, very good to this community. They both have, so this is just an oppor, another opportunity for our employees to use it if they so wish. Oh, I'll make, oh yeah, I'll make, I'm sorry, thank you, Mark. I'll make a motion to approve the use by village employees of the paper converting machine credit union and that we be admitted as an employer whose employees will be allowed to use that credit union, and we send the appropriate paperwork to the credit union.
I'll second. I've been a credit union member for more years than I can remember.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to become an employer with paper converting machine credit union. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, number 11, items for next agenda?
I got one. I'd like staff and if it has to go through committee levels, appropriate committees to define what an, a Lambo event is and what's taking place on Lambo events. What, you know, just because, it needs some clarification.
Not a bad, not a bad, that's a good point.
Okay.
I would like, if, if it's appropriate, maybe we're not there yet, I would like to know, our next meeting, if we could have a brief look see as where we are on enforcing our short-term rental ordinance. There's lots of people out there renting these things at $2,000, $3,000 a, a game, and they're not paying their taxes, room taxes, and I, I just like to know where we are in enforcing that ordinance, if we can, if, if it's appropriate. We may not quite be there yet, but I'd like to know where we are. Thank you.
You know, another thing that ran through my mind late this summer, we okayed feeding the kids in the parks. I wonder if we can have a summary on how that went for the year?
Feeding the kids, did you say?
Feeding the kids in the parks, Fort Howard.
Oh!
It was brought up by the Parks Department and it was approved. I just want to see what happened there.
Yeah. Had those reports by someone other than the engineering department, okay.
I'm going to go to closed session.
I gotta read first.
Oh, no.
Okay. Start reading, Pat.
Do we have a closed session?
Closed session item, during the meeting of the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabonan may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 1985-1E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on development projects related to Lombardi Avenue and Holmgren Way in Tax Incremental District III, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 1985-sub-2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I'll accept a motion to convene into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to closed session. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams. Trustee Bukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Milczeski.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed.